Let's check with Rucha. You all set? Let's give her another couple of minutes.
Sounds good.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen here in council chambers and welcome to anyone who might be following along remotely. This is the August 5, 2024, meeting of the San Carlos Planning and Transportation Commission. We have no remote participation requests this evening that I'm aware of. So I think with that, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ruf.
Present.
Commissioner Gari is excused. Commissioner Castaneda. Absent. Vice Chair Clemens.
Present.
Chair Yakupuni.
Present. Very good. Well, our next order of business is the approval of the minutes from our June 17, 2024 meeting. Commissioners, comments, edits. Vice Chair Clemens.
Thank you, Chair. I just would, I would request of staff to, to correct the couple of citations to my name that have typos on packet page four and packet page five. So with that, with those corrections, if I may, make the motion.
Commissioner Ruf, any edits?
No edits for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. With those corrections, I would like to move that we approve the June 17, 2024 Planning and Transportation Commission meeting minutes with the, with the edits as indicated.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Ruf.
Yes.
Commissioner Gari is excused. Commissioner Castaneda is absent. Vice Chair Clemens.
Yes.
Chair Yakupuni.
Yes. Thank you very much. So we're now into Agenda Item Six, Public Hearing. Procedure for public hearings, that staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with staff's recommendations. And if applicable, the applicant may make a presentation. Thereafter, interested party members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commissioner will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else has raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out speaker forms. If you'd like to speak, there's speaker forms over there in the back, and please bring them up to, to city staff. And then we'll put you in the queue for comments during the appropriate item. The speaker should then come up to the microphone here, speak, to speak since the meeting is being recorded, and this will help staff in preparing the minutes. So thank you very much. Two items this evening, and our first item is scoping meeting for the San Carlos Northeast Area Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report. And so with that, I think we have a presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sadhi Hock, and I'm the Senior Management Analyst with the Community Development Department. And tonight, I'll be introducing the scoping meeting for the environmental impact report that is being prepared for the Northeast Area Specific Plan project. Before we get started, I would like to introduce the project team present tonight. From the city's side, we have Lisa Porras, Planning Manager for the Advanced Planning Division, and we have Lisa Costa-Sanders with Good City Company. Our SEQA consultant for this project is David J. Powers and Associates, and we have Acony Danielson, President with us here in person, and Natalie Neuer, Senior Project Manager, and Desiree D. Rossi, Project Manager with us virtually. Our primary project consultant for the Northeast Area Specific Plan is Perkins &amp; Will, and we have Mark Asness, Project Manager with us virtually as well, to help any project-related questions that may come up. This item is part of the California Environmental Quality Act's requirement to receive public comments on the scope of the upcoming environmental review for the project. Tonight's presentation will begin with a quick project refresher. The purpose of the scoping meeting is to inform the community and outside agencies of the project, receive comments on the scope and content of environmental analysis, and really to share upcoming public input opportunities as this project progresses. Before we dive into the environmental aspects, I wanted to go over the Northeast Area Specific Plan background briefly. The Northeast Area, which has historically been referred to as the Harbor Industrial Area, was annexed into the city of San Carlos city limits in 1997, and since then, there have been very few changes in the area. Over the last several years, the Northeast Area has received a lot of interest from developers who want to redevelop the area and build new buildings for life science and biotechnology companies. Because of this, the Northeast Area will likely see significant change from new development, and the city wants to really thoughtfully plan for these anticipated changes by creating the Northeast Area Specific Plan. During the summer and fall of 2023, the project team developed three draft land use options for the Northeast Area, and after robust community outreach and meetings with decision-makers, the preferred land use plan was endorsed by the Planning and Transportation Commission on January 16, 2024, and the City Council on February 12, 2024. And since then, the project team began drafting the specific plan and the environmental and technical analysis initiated. The planned area consists of approximately 145 acres located within the northeast corner of the city of San Carlos, as seen on the map here. The planned area is roughly bound by Belmont Creek, U.S. Highway 101, the western property lines of the residential parcels along Northwood Drive, the northeastern property lines of the residential parcels along Fairfield Drive, and the southeast property line of the Palo Alto Medical Facilities and Old County Road. As endorsed by the PTC and City Council, the preferred land use plan for the Northeast Area would include the following land use designations, as shown in the figure on the screen: light industrial, indicated by the blue area; residential mixed use, indicated by the dark yellow area; and institutional, indicated by the light pink area. On this slide, we have draft projections for future anticipated development from 2025 to 2045. Over the next 20 years, we are anticipating 1890 housing units in this area with a corresponding population increase of 3,700 people. It is important to note that currently, housing is not an allowed use in this area. Additionally, we are anticipating about 4.5 million square feet of non-residential use with a corresponding of 13,800 jobs. Proposed building heights for the light industrial area within the Northeast Area would range from 75 to 100 feet, which aligns with the existing allowed heights. Additional height increases going up to a total maximum of 155 feet for certain parts of the light industrial uses would be permitted by the city in exchange for community benefits. Building heights for the residential mixed use area would range from 75 to 90 feet, and residential uses abutting the RS6 single-family neighborhoods have a proposed step-down of 35 feet. There is no bonus height permitted for the residential mixed use areas. It is important to note that the Comprehensive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan for the environs of San Carlos Airport, or the ALUCP, will ultimately dictate the maximum height permitted within the Northeast Plan to protect navigable airspace around the airport. This slide gives a brief overview of the proposed transportation network within the specific plan. A new proposed street segment from Quarry Road to Brigadoa Road would be implemented as part of the Northeast Plan. Additionally, the Northeast Plan would include improvements to the existing transportation network, such as pedestrian and bicycle connection to Belmont Creek from Quarry Road, and the redesign of Industrial Road as a multimodal district boulevard. I'll now hand it over to Acony to discuss the SEQA.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Acony Danielson from David J. Powers and Associates. We're the environmental consultant assisting the city with preparation of the environmental impact report for this specific plan. And let's see, advance, okay. So first, starting off with the, what is the California Environmental Quality Act? So it's a law, state law, went into effect in 1970, and it's a law that applies to all public agencies in the state that undertake an action that has a physical change to the environment. So a plan will lead to future development that could change the environment, so the city has to conduct an environmental study prior to acting on the plan so that the environmental factors can be considered in the decision. You, the lead agency, the city, is supposed to identify what conditions exist on and around the plan, and how they would be affected by the proposed action, identify ways to mitigate or avoid effects, and when effects cannot be mitigated to a less than significant level, identify alternatives to those impacts. It's important to note that it's a disclosure law, it's an impact law, it doesn't mandate an outcome. So when a project has a significant effect, an agency can still proceed as long as the reason for doing so is clear. So when there's a significant effect that can't be mitigated, the lead agency has to identify why the benefits of a project outweigh those impacts, what's called the statement of overriding considerations. So what is an environmental impact report? First and foremost, it's an informational document. So it's going to provide information about, first and foremost, what the plan involves, what the plan proposes to do. It identifies the information, again, that's within the plan area and within the surrounding environment that could be affected by the plan. And it will identify impacts based upon certain thresholds that we use for different topics that I'll get into. And then, to the extent that there are significant effects, we identify mitigation measures that could be implemented either by the city or, in some cases, other agencies that will have a role to play, such as the regional board or the county. And we will also identify alternatives to the plan. So to the extent that the plan were, was going to impact some particular sensitive resource within the, within the plan area, we'd identify a plan alternative that avoided it or protected it. If the plan is large enough that, due to its scale, it has certain effects, we'd identify how much you might need to reduce the plan to avoid that effect, and then identify. how much you might need to reduce the plan to avoid that effect, and then identify how much the objectives would still be achieved. And then, it's also important to note that preparing an EIR, certifying an EIR, doesn't result in approval of the project, and that's a separate action to be taken by the decision-maker, in this case, the city council. But as I mentioned, when a lead agency decides to proceed with a project despite significant effects, again, the decision-makers need to go on record and identify why they've decided to proceed, how the benefits of the project exceed or outweigh the effects. So, this next slide is covering the process for the preparation of the environmental impact report. So, the first part was that the city issued what's called the Notice of Preparation. So, again, taking into account the plan area, it's about 145 acres, and all the development that's anticipated, we expect there will be significant effects, so it needs an environmental impact report, as opposed to what you might also have heard is called a mitigated negative declaration. So, smaller projects, more routine, can qualify for a different type of document process called a mitigated negative declaration. This is a large plan, lot of development, we expect a good amount of impacts, so environmental impact report's necessary. And this is the most thorough exhaustive level of review, and has the largest, or the most, greatest opportunities for public participation, let me phrase it that way. So, starts with a notice of preparation that went out on July 1st, circulates for 30 days to other public agencies and interested individuals, gets put in the newspaper, that's closing on tomorrow, the 6th. Another form of outreach prior to preparing the IR is this scoping meeting, so this is intended to solicit feedback on the scope and content of the IR, because, again, this document's going to be available for the commission's use and the council's use in deciding what to do with the plan. After the scoping process concludes, the city staff and the consultant team will be conducting a number of technical studies to evaluate the plan's effects, and first documenting what conditions are there, and then evaluating the plan's effects on those conditions. And we then would be circulating the draft EIR for 45-day public review period. The city will be taking comments from members of the public, other public agencies, property owners, interested organizations, on our analysis. And then, once the 45-day review period is concluded, we'll prepare what's called a final EIR, and that'll consist of all of the comments received from the public, other agencies, the responses to all substantive environmental issues that have been raised, any text revisions, so if there's instances where information needed to be clarified or expanded, or if there's refinements to the plan. So, again, the plan is being prepared and refined in parallel process. We're not expecting that, you know, the plan as it exists in August of 2024 is fixed. It will continue to be refined and improved up to the point that the council acts on it. And so, when we prepare the final, we will capture any changes that have occurred, any refinements to the plan over time. The final EIR will be then presented to the Planning Commission and City Council for consideration. And once the city council certifies the IR, at that point, the council can be making a decision about the project. Again, if the council's inclined to approve it despite its effects, the council will need to indicate why, how the benefits of the plan, all of its objectives being achieved, outweigh the effects. So, these are the topics that we would analyze. So, this is a list of topics that are in the state SEQA guidelines, there's 20 of them. Again, SEQA covers all public agencies across the state of California, so there's a lot of different conditions and environments across the state, so not every topic that's listed here is going to be relevant to these 145 acres in San Carlos, so we're going to give more attention to those things that are relevant to this part of the world. You know, so we're probably not going to spend as much time on biological resources as we would if it was in a pristine environment, but there are some biological resources, so we do have a biologist on part of our team, but, again, it might not get as much emphasis as some of the others, just because of the nature of the environment we're dealing with. But you can see there, there's a whole range of topics, and for each of them, we use what are called thresholds, so we look to see for, just take air quality as an example, we'd look to see what's the existing environment for air quality. There we have plans prepared by the air district, we look to see we're in attainment for some types of pollutants and non-attainment for others. The district has prepared thresholds that we use to evaluate how much pollution you can produce before you begin to exceed a threshold, and mitigation, things that you can do primarily related to traffic, because most of the pollution we experience in the Bay Area is due to tailpipe emissions. And then, again, to the extent that an impact is significant, we would identify ways to reduce those effects. And then, when it simply can't be reduced to a level of less than significant, we disclose a significant unavoidable effect, so it's possible that for this project, given its plan, given how big it is, how much development would occur, we might exceed some air pollution thresholds, and so we'll see if there's mitigation for that or not. And then, again, as I mentioned, when an impact's significant and unavoidable, it needs to be overridden by the decision-maker. Okay, so then, there are many opportunities to comment, for the public to participate in the IR process, so as we mentioned, the city started by sending out a notice of preparation that concludes tomorrow, 30-day review period on that. Tonight is a scoping meeting to receive public feedback. The draft EIR is going to circulate for 45 days, that'll be an opportunity for public feedback. The final EIR circulates for 10 days, that's another opportunity, and then the various So then, for tonight's hearing, again, we're looking to solicit feedback, not necessarily on the plan itself, the plan's been through a lot of public outreach, but really, it's the environmental analysis, so are there, you know, certain things that you would like to see addressed in this document? So, as I mentioned, you know, we're going to be studying biology, we have a biologist on our team, we have an air quality consultant, we have an archaeologist, we have traffic engineers, we have, there's flooding in the area due to Belmont Creek and some low-line areas, we have a hydrologist on our team. We've got a broad range of technical experts, but if there are particular conditions out there that you are aware of, that you're curious how they'd be affected by the implementation of this plan, or if there are things that are sensitive or problematic that you would like to be informed about, tonight's the night to let us know. Okay, so then, again, I've mentioned this before, tomorrow is the end of the Notice of Preparation 30-day comment period. You can see the contact information there on how to send comments on the Notice of Preparation. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Akoni. In terms of next steps, following the scoping meeting tonight and the end of the scoping period, which ends tomorrow on August 6th, we will conduct the environmental review and prepare the draft EIR, anticipated for February 2025. Then, there will be a 45-day public comment period and public hearing, similar to today, on the contents and conclusion of the draft EIR. After we collect all the comments on the draft EIR, we'll prepare the final EIR, and the final EIR will include all of the public comments received and responses to those comments. The final EIR will be brought back to the PTC for a formal recommendation around August 2025, and then presented to council for EIR certification and plan adoption around September And this concludes our presentation for the scoping meeting. For more information about the project, and even to access the NOP, because you do have until tomorrow to provide any comments, please visit the project website at sancarlosnortheastplan.com. To receive any project updates, please go to the project website and sign up. Thank you again. City and consultant team are available to receive comments on the scope of the environmental review and/or answer any questions the commission may have.
Great, thank you, Sudhuti, and Akoni, thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, why don't we start, let's say, with two questions each, we'll rotate through, let's get our clarifications out of the way, and then we can move to public comment, and then follow up with our discussion. Vice Chair Clemens?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. This was a very clear representation of the difference between the EIR and the project itself, so thank you for that, Akoni. I just wanted to talk for a minute about the housing and population assumptions. Can you, can you talk to us about the difference between what might go forward in that area versus what you end up studying for purposes of the EIR?
I can give a little bit of background as to how we came to those assumptions, so we are following the general plan reset, because they are making some citywide assumptions. So, for the household population, the housing units, they're converted to households by applying the vacancy rate, and then the household size is applied to the number of households. So, for the Northeast Plan, we're also looking at the future vacancy rate, because there is no existing housing in the area, and we're assuming multifamily household size, because there is no single-family housing. And then, for job conversion rates, those were calculated based on RSG's report by dividing the projected job growth by the projected square footage growth for each land use. However, Akoni can speak to a little bit more about how those assumptions may change during the EIR process.
I don't have that much more to add, honestly. So, at this point, we're looking to the staff to tell us, based upon the types of units they expect within the plan, what sort of household size is reasonable, and then, based upon that population, we'll run a bunch of calculations for water supply and things like that.
Right. And so, just to clarify, by my division, 1,890 housing units, 3,700 people, potentially means it's just under 2 people per household. Is that an assumption consistent with the general plan? Where does that come from, that 1.96?
Yeah, so that came from the general plan consultant team, and we realize that it's a little bit lower than what is standard, it's actually 1.99, but that's because they're looking at multifamily and considering a future vacancy rate.
Got it. And again, the plan, this is my last question, defines maximum heights, maximum heights, and then additional height increases that could occur through negotiation but aren't necessarily. I'm assuming that the calculations are going to be done without assuming any additional heights are requested, but also that somebody might choose to build, you know, slightly below the maximum heights, for instance, right? So that that number of additional people could be much smaller in reality, or somewhat smaller, is that right?
So, I do want to clarify that any discussions or speculations on bonus height, that's only going to be applied to non-residential, so that won't affect the population size. So, for anything residential, there will be no bonus height permitted.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Roof?
I saw the list of environmental elements that would be included, and it was all of them, if I'm not mistaken, including the agriculture and forestry resources, and also the mineral ones. Those two elements, we'd left out of the general plan reset environmental impact report scope, and I'm curious why they appeared here, it just seems like they're not relevant for that area.
Yeah, that's correct. As I mentioned, I was listing there the full scope of environmental topics that are in the Appendix G of the SEQA guidelines, but as I mentioned, you know, those are applied statewide, so, you know, if we were dealing with a farmland conversion project out in the Central Valley, or if this was a project that was in a mineral-rich area, those would be relevant, but those two topics, again, will explain why they don't warrant further study, so we're just noting the topics we're supposed to address, but as I noted, not all of them are going to be applicable here because of the conditions that are present, so there won't be much about them, because there's not much to say about them within the bounds of the Northeast Area Specific Plan.
But for the general plan update, they were not included at all, but this time they are, so that's the differential that I'm curious to understand. In this case, they would have to be addressed, even if just briefly, while under the general plan update scope, they wouldn't even be on the table, am I understanding?
Well, I would imagine that, and so, I mean, I'm not involved in that EIR, so I can't speak exactly how they're going to approach it, but I would imagine what they will do, like we will do, is we will acknowledge the full scope of environmental topics that are covered under Appendix G of the state guidelines, and we'll note that several of the topics, you know, do not, they're not present within the plan, so we'll cite the county important farmland map to show that there's no important farmland within the boundaries of the specific plan, we'll count, we'll cite the county geologic map to show that there's no important mineral resources. I would imagine the general plan update will do something very similar, just basically take them off the table with a paragraph of analysis, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that explains it. That's all for me.
Okay, great, thank you. I had a couple of questions, but you took care of most of them, so I'll try with one last, and that is, is there a development area or a plan area, either in San Carlos or in a neighboring community, that this area is like, and therefore, is there a document that's already been developed that either you'll use as a guide, or that the public might be able to go look at and say, "Well, when it's all done, it might look like this, and here's the way the city might be talking about these," so is there a model out there?
May I ask for clarifications? Are you talking about the kind of urban framework and the land use plan, or are you talking about as it relates to the EIR?
EIR, I mean, we're, this is an important document, it will inform a lot of what we do, it will probably consider questions that are beyond anything that I'd thought of, and for anybody who might be interested in what does an EIR cover, or what has it covered in similar circumstances in San Mateo County, is there an example?
Sure, okay. One I'm personally familiar with, the city of East Palo Alto, a little over a week ago, has released the draft EIR for the Ravenswood Specific Plan area, and so that's, if you're not familiar with that area, it's sort of the east side of East Palo Alto, between university and the Baylands, Bay Road out there, and pretty similar situation. It's a underutilized industrial area, not a lot of housing, and the plan is to intensify it with, they're looking at two scenarios between 2.8 and 3.3 million square feet, so here, this is 4.5, so a little more, and that plan has two scenarios between 1,350 and 1,600 housing units, so pretty similar. That started circulating a week ago, so you could go on the city of East Palo Alto website and take a look at that one.
That's great, thank you, that was spot-on, and nothing else for me. Commissioner Roof? Great, thank you. I think, let's move on to public comment, because I'm sure the public have, has thought, so if you're at home, following or following along remotely, what we'll do is, I have one speaker slip, we'll ask Carlos Hernandez to come on up in just a second, and in the meantime, if you're following along at home, please raise your hand now, and probably about a minute, Lynette will take stock of any hands raised and then put you in the queue for comment. And again, if you might have come in a little later, and you want to speak, fill out a speaker card, and bring it on up. Great, thank you. So with that, public comment period, Carlos Hernandez. And you have two minutes, please.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners, thank you for having me here. Very quickly, as you know, we are a significant employer and taxpayer in the city for over 60 years, and we support the city's effort for creating more housing. We have some comments around the NOP that has been presented, which puts us in the light industrial subarea 3, which has a base height of 75 feet with a bonus permitted of 75 feet. We're a global leader in the San manufacturer of transformers, right, and we believe that the two other subareas next to us have an advantage on the height, and for us, in order to become more competitive and continue innovation in a very, very competitive industry, we need to start evaluating vertical expansion to our facility to improve manufacturing and assembly of what we make today. So, it's very true that the industry we're in is moving to larger units, which might require us to raise the roof of manufacture of these units. Some advanced manufacturing equipment requires taller buildings, and doing an underground pit for us might be not an alternative, it could be more expensive. Also, with the competitive disadvantage being limited to 75 feet or 150, while adjacent parcels are able to build 230 or 255 feet, will suppress the future value of our property in event of a sale. The adjacent properties will have an additional height that will be significantly more valuable to our property, to potential buyers. So, with that, what we're asking is that our property is changed from a subarea 3 to subarea 1 to subarea one, or at least modified to be equal on the height limitations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good and clear. Sorry, I have to butt my glasses on. Jean. Jean Plasteras? Come on up, Jean. And Lynette, after Jean is, sorry, Joan, after Joan has spoken, we're going to move over to remote callers. So if you could take a log and close out the hand raising. Thank you. Joan, welcome.
Commissioners, thanks for this opportunity to stand up and just bring a few things to your attention. I'm a real estate broker, I'm a native Californian, born and raised in San Francisco, live on the mid peninsula now. I was the broker involved representing both buyer and seller at 310 Phelps, but I'm not talking about that today. I'm also a board member and a commercial broker for representing CellLink at 610 Query. Just to give a few thoughts to you, first of all, I want to thank you for trying to manage the growth of biotech in this area. You may or may not be aware that, and I do, private company investment as well, you may not be aware that we are overbuilt by about five, at least seven years for biotech. We're going to have vacant biotech buildings all over the place. So as you manage this area, I would hope, following the previous speaker, that you'll keep in mind the benefit of retaining your industrial users, like CellLink, the startups that are now coming back to our area from abroad as incentivized by the national government. We kicked a lot of manufacturing overseas, we're bringing it back, and we don't have a lot of small industrial buildings mid peninsula. We're desperate for that. How can you help? I would say, let's go fast forward in terms of allowing renovation of the facade at 610 Query and other buildings. You want to keep your industrial users because there aren't a lot of places for them to go, other than Texas. So I think we want to keep Silicon Valley here, we want to keep San Carlos thriving. And so I would suggest that we make a tremendous effort here to accommodate at great speed any requests for innovation or development of these buildings by current users who have industrial applications. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, Lynette, do we have callers that would like to share comments remotely?
Yes, we have one so far, Todd Schreckel.
Very good. Good evening. Welcome to the Planning and Transportation Commission. You have the floor, and you have two minutes, please.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Todd Schreckel. We've met at a couple of different Planning Commission meetings over the last year or so. I am with Hunter Partners, based in Cupertino. We own Bay Area Self-Storage located at 151 Industrial Road in San Carlos. We are currently a non-conforming, a legal non-conforming use in the city's zoning ordinance, and would continue to be that if the Northeast Area Specific Plan is adopted. We are of the opinion that we need, and the city needs to be looking out for the interests of those users like us, who are legal non-conforming, and would ask that the team, the SEQA team, explores this idea of providing people like us and others the ability to expand our businesses, even though we are legal non-conforming. So we just hope that the Acony and the team do study that, this idea of being able to expand the grandfather, excuse me, grandfathering clause in the city of San Carlos. So we commend what the city is doing, we like the idea of the Northeast Area Specific Plan, but just want existing users to be able to continue to thrive and expand their businesses once the plan is adopted. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Todd, appreciate your taking the time this evening. And Lynette, is there another caller?
There are no more hands raised.
Okay, and I don't have any other speaker slips here. We'll give another 10 seconds to anybody who might be following remotely. And anyone at this time?
There are none.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion to close public comment.
I move that we close public comment on Agenda Item 6A.
I second that, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
Chair Akapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey is excused, and Commissioner Castaneda is absent.
Thank you. So Commissioners, I think our team have asked for our input, any things that we want to flag regarding topics specifically to be drilled down on or emphasized during their study. So they've got a bunch of months, quarters ahead of them. So maybe you start with Commissioner Roof, if you have a few things to add, please share.
Well, I guess I'd like to start by saying that with the addition of the new residential zoning that's proposed for that area, the potential impact of environmental effects becomes even more important. And so this process is critical to our development, and I'm glad to see that we've got a thorough analysis planned. The scope of what we're being asked to endorse tonight is the scope of the EIR. And right now, all of the potential elements defined by the state are included, and so we haven't, there's not much of a discussion about, narrow, I mean, I guess we're not, there's nothing to worry about that's not included, because everything is included. But, and so that, you know, those items that I mentioned, the agricultural and mineral, to me seem like a potential waste of resources to have to deal with them going down the road, but it's better to have more than, better to have extra stuff than to leave things out that might be important. So I'm not overly worried about that. I think the, we had several public comments today, and I think the concerns behind those comments, it's very important that the commission and the city staff receive those and take those into account in future planning. I'm personally comfortable that the scope of the environmental impact report that we're addressing tonight is sufficient to cover the scenarios that were raised there. There's some undecided questions there, but whatever the answer to those questions is, this, the scope I'm comfortable with will be adequate. So I guess I'm comfortable with the proposal that's on the table.
Thank you, Commissioner Roof. Vice Chair Clements?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I realize the analysis categories are set out under state law. As the EIR gets prepared, I'll be looking carefully for the air quality impacts. We did not, the staff did not propose residential uses up against the highway, so I think that will be important for good air quality for future residents in the area. That said, the existing businesses that are there, and then general proximity to the highway, I'll be looking for analysis to make sure, if we are going to integrate residences there, that it's a good place to live and it's a safe place to live. I think because of the mix of uses that is designated for that area now, I think noise, not only from the highway and from the airport, will be important to look at, but again, noise impacts from existing commercial uses in that area, to the extent that it can be made specific to the, you know, the businesses that are there, realizing over time, not everyone will, not that mix may change over time. The other thing that I'll be looking for in the EIR is an emphasis on the, I guess it's a combination of the soils. I did not know this was one of the most seismically active regions, you know, this particular area has seismic activity potential, so...
The Bay Area as a whole?
The Bay Area as a whole, thank you for clarification. So making sure, again, that, you know, how is this, if we do do a lot more building in this area, that it's a safe place to build, but also the water impacts, we've heard many public comments about water in this area, you know, from past flooding, and then again, any kind of pollutant impacts, if there are kind of floodwater levels or flows through this area, you know, making sure the base stays safe and that the businesses and the people are also safe if any of those happens. And then finally, the hazards and hazardous material, same thing as with the noise, to make sure that the uses that are anticipated there are compatible and would not expose the public to any unduly risks. So those are the areas I'm going to be interested in reading more about, and thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Clements. Maybe a few points of emphasis or new items. Regarding the water, flooding and flood mitigation has been raised, I know it's a theme of the plan, and just because of the area of the city it is in, I would encourage a real in-depth consideration of multiple, whatever the right year of storm is, and the appropriateness of flooding and flood mitigation in that area. And I think then the flip side is, the plan envisions greater access to utilization or development preservation around the creek, Belmont Creek, and is there any positive benefit from that? That ought to be highlighted. It seems to me an important feature of the plan from a wildlife perspective, a public access recreation, so those would be good, from my perspective, to make sure to speak to. I think the second has to do with infrastructure, two themes here. One is education, school, school system, and if there's not going to be a school in the area, which I don't, I don't think there is, then what about the busing? What about the additional vehicle trips that result? What about the overload on, or the load on classrooms? Just a thoughtful consideration of education. And then the other one is, I would say, probably typical, but utilities, whether it's sewage or electricity. It seems to me that we've got 3,200 more people and not insignificant on the scale of San Carlos, so utilities would be a second theme for me. And then I think the third, and we've spoke about it during the various hearings previously, making sure to articulate well the way the plan anticipates impacts on the existing businesses, the quality of life, or the jobs, the work environment, and therefore, the current economic vibrancy of the area, and that the plan anticipates impacts on those and has strategies to mitigate or better enhance what we have today. That would be my comments. I think with that, we, there's no resolution, so it was just a comment opportunity, and I think we've completed 6A. One last, correct? Good?
No further comments.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, thank you for your help. Hopefully, you got some things to get you started with. Okay, very good. We are now on Agenda Item 6B. This is a public hearing to consider adoption of resolutions recommending the city council approve an amendment to the circulation and scenic highways element of the general plan, and recommending the city council adopt the transportation study guidelines. And I'll put out one more call for those present or following along remotely. If you would like to speak on this topic, please feel free to grab a speaker form and bring it up to the front. And when we get to that point, please feel free to, please raise your hand and flag yourself for Lynette. So with that, presentation by staff, please.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Hanya Hushmandi, and I'm the city's senior traffic engineer. We are here to introduce to you our new transportation study guidelines. Is the clicker? This has been a collaborative effort between Departments of Public Works and Community Developments. You can see the project lead team's names on the slide, and we also have our consultants, Farr and Pierce, who have been helping us put together very robust and comprehensive guidelines here to present. The transportation study guidelines will provide transportation report preparers clear guidelines on methodology of analysis and preparing reports to ensure consistency among different consultants who work on various projects in the city. Adopting the guidelines, as well as implementing the associated general plan amendment that goes with it, will simplify, clarify, and unify the review process throughout the city, and will set clear expectations for applicants, staff, and the public. As the Chair mentioned a few moments ago, we have two resolutions that we're requesting that you adopt tonight. One is to adopt, to recommend to the city council to adopt the guidelines, and two is to recommend the city council to adopt the associated general plan amendment to provide policy framework for the guidelines, as well as consistency with state law. Without further ado, I'll leave you in the capable hands of Matt Goine, our consultant from Farr and Pierce, to present the item. And after he's finished, Lisa Costa-Sanders and I, along with Matt, will be here to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Hanya.
Take it away.
Thanks. Hello, Commissioners, thank you for having me. I'm Matt Goine with Farr and Pierce. And hi. And as Hanya mentioned, we helped develop these transportation study guidelines. And so what I'll be talking about today is just giving a brief overview of the general plan amendment, and how it will change the roadway performance metrics that are included within it. And then I'll be talking about the transportation study guidelines with an overview, and then some details about the non-SEQA and SEQA transportation analyses. So first, the transportation metric that is currently in the general plan is level of service, and these images here represent the three, the six levels of level of service that traffic engineers use to evaluate the delay that drivers experience. And so level of service A through D is typically acceptable levels, but increasing levels of delay, while level of service E and F typically result in people having to wait multiple cycles to travel through intersections. And that is different from vehicle miles traveled, which is a measurement of the total amount of travel on a network. And so Senate Bill 743, back in 2013, directed the state of California to shift from level service, which is the impact to drivers, to vehicle miles traveled, which is the impact of driving on the environment. And so this changed how all jurisdictions do their environmental impact analysis, but that means, that doesn't mean that jurisdictions can't still study level of service, they can continue to include that in your general plan type analysis, as we're proposing today. And so the general plan establishes level service as a performance metric currently for transportation analysis. And so the changes that you'll be seeing here include adding VMT as one of your transportation metrics to the general plan while keeping level service. And so this allows you to just be consistent with the types of analyses that the state requires. And then moving the level service thresholds, so the thresholds that indicate what makes a significant effect on the environment, those are moving from the general plan to the transportation study guidelines. And then the general plan amendment also authorizes the city to maintain those transportation study guidelines, which will have all the technical details, they will be, you know, managed by city staff and allow city staff to kind of stay up with the current state of the practice, whether it's for level service or for vehicle miles traveled. So now, just an overview of the transportation study guidelines, there's really two pathways here, and... And you'll see, I'll be stepping you through each step of a flow chart for each of these pathways, the non-sequo and the sequo approach. And before I do that, though, just a quick overview of the types of analyses that are included. First, on the non-sequo side, you have, you see a variety of kind of design compliance. These are really objective design standard type, you know, city standard type compliance things, whether it's making sure there's pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities, transit facilities that meet your design standards or design best practices, safety and onsite circulation, driveway design, other parking and truck access considerations, and just in general jurisdictional requirements. So this will be applicable to any projects. We're calling them Tier One. I'll explain shortly in the non-sequo section what that means. But then for your medium and larger projects, we'll also include things like passenger loading, which starts to become an issue as you add more people coming to and from projects, transportation demand management, which is required by sequa, oh, sorry, by CCAG for these size of projects. And then once you get into the medium and large projects, the Tier Two and Tier Three, you also have to start to do level service and looking at different intersection configurations. And so that's the type of analysis that's under the non-sequo. The sequo includes the required components under the guidelines. This includes VMT, plan compliance, hazards, and emergency access. And some of this will flow in, and that's why we're going to spend most of the time on the non-sequo component here. So really, the three tiers of projects, the first tier, this is the first step in the non-sequo flow chart, how many trips does it generate? If it generates less than 100 vehicle trips, we call that, we're calling that the Tier One, that is your small size of project, really just focusing on what is happening at the site, within the site, and along the immediate frontage. And that's something that can really be done, just, you know, without, you know, a full sequo process potentially. Now, the second step is for projects between 100 vehicle trips and 1,000 daily vehicle trips and fewer than 100 peak hour trips. This is your medium-sized project, Tier Two. We'll continue to do that site access and circulation, and then we'll start to look at nearby, near-term, off-site intersection analyses to understand how does this project affect the closest intersections to it? How does it change the traffic operations? And then your largest size project, and this is the type of project that you all typically see, really, you're not seeing many of those kind of smaller, medium-sized projects, but the larger projects that generate more than 1,000 vehicles or 100 peak hour trips, this is like your Alexandria project, for example, will continue to do the site access and circulation, focus on both near-term and longer-term traffic operations to understand how that project might affect traffic circulation in combination with everything else that's happening in the city in the future, and just looking at regional routes as well. And so once the type of study has been determined and that analysis has been conducted, if there is any deficiencies, then you would go through the process of identifying whatever required improvements are needed to address those deficiencies. And that's the, really, those Tier Two, Tier Three projects are where you would need a kind of typically going to have a sequo and transportation consultant who are involved in doing that, that type of analysis for the city and then would go to review for you all. So now shifting over to the sequo analysis, the second part of the chart here. So City of San Carlos follows the, does transportation impact analysis according to the sequo guidelines, focusing on VMT, plan compliance, hazards, and emergency access, as I mentioned. Really, the only thing that's being tweaked here as a part of this is the VMT, and I'll explain what your current processes are in a few slides. But we're really focused on the VMT here as, you know, the city will continue to do their plan compliance and hazards assessment, emergency access, for example. And then it's important to note that this kind of pathway won't be needed for any projects that are exempt from sequo because they are exempt not just from VMT, but any sort of sequo topic that includes statutory or categorical exemptions. And so the existing San Carlos VMT policy was adopted in 2020. You all were a very early adopter, so congrats on that. There's been a lot of guidance that's been provided by CCAG and MTC and the California Governor's Office of Planning Research, all about the kind of technical approaches as well as the justification for screening criteria and thresholds and stuff. So on the calculation, the changes that are happening on the calculation approach and technical tools, I'm not going into those details today because that's really, just really flowing down the guidance from CCAG. And that's within the report, and that's really meant for staff to just understand what is the best practices. What I am going to focus here on is the VMT screening criteria and threshold changes. And so as we start to go down this pathway on the sequo side, first question we need to ask, is there a general plan amendment? If there is, we need to do a VMT analysis, a full kind of quantitative analysis, and that's because the general plan has these assumptions that are built in of the future VMT that will be generated by the city, and that kind of flows up all the way to the region, the state, assumptions of how much VMT is going to be generated. So if there's a, you know, if it differs from that, then, then analysis needs to be done of how much it differs. Now, if it is consistent with the general plan, the first step is we need to understand whether we need to do a quantitative analysis or whether it's a type of project that can be presumed to have a less than significant impact. And so any sequo topic has, can have screening criteria, it's at the discretion of the city. It's really meant to just simplify the process so you don't have to do a full analysis for every different project that comes up. And so the project characteristics and locations that could be screened out, and this is based on kind of CCAG and MTC guidance, you're looking at transit priority areas, affordable housing projects, small projects, locally serving public facilities, and neighborhood serving retail. I'll step you through a little bit more about what is changing from what's currently being used to what is here in the next few slides. Before I do that, just one kind of overlap between the two criteria of the sequo and non-sequo, small projects, that lines up with the Tier One projects as well. But any of the other kind of screening criteria here could be a Tier Two or Tier Three type of project when it comes to VMT, because we're talking about different types of metrics. We're talking about the amount of vehicle trips that are generated versus the project's impact on the environment and how much driving it incurs. So the changes to the 2020 VMT policy, so starting with the transit priority area. So in 2020, San Carlos adopted just screening out presuming that residential projects near transit were less than significant. Since then, MTC and CCAG have developed tools and information and substantial evidence, so it's a little bit easier to understand that, you know, kind of the broad range of alignment with transit priority areas in terms of creating a less than significant impact. And so the current guidelines now allow any qualifying project to be screened out from a VMT analysis within that area. The second criteria, low VMT areas, was discussed but not adopted in the original 2020 policy. It did closely align with the TPAs, and there was just questions about the type of model information to use. That information's now available. There's online maps that show what locations, parts of the city or county qualify for low VMT areas. And that's based on the existing characteristics, the people who live or work there today, that they generate a less than significant amount of VMT. On affordable housing, it was not included previously, and now is 100% affordable housing. This aligns with kind of all the regional guidance to build affordable housing, as well as the state law exemptions that pretty much exempt most affordable housing projects now from sequo. And then on the local serving retail and public facilities, retail previously was screened out at 15 KSF. This guideline uses 30 KSF as kind of like a middle ground between what the state and kind of county recommend. At 50 KSF, 50 KSF is kind of like a larger grocery store, big box stores like 100,000. So we're talking like, 30,000 will accommodate kind of more locally serving, smaller grocery stores and kind of smaller neighborhood retail, and is a little bit less restrictive than that 15 KSF. And also publicly owned facilities would be screened out as well as being locally serving. So here are your maps of what the current model information is from CCAG. You have, on your left, you have resident VMT per capita. On your right, you have employee. And in the green is those areas that currently generate less than 15% below the regional average. In the yellow is the transit priority areas. The overlap is where they, where they both overlap. It's important to note that this is based on the existing kind of characteristics, and so different kind of types of uses that go into those locations in the future may generate different characteristics, generally kind of with the understanding that kind of infill, infill generally lowers the amount of VMT per capita because there's just more people, more amenities that are closer next to each other. So we're wrapping up if, now that I've talked through all the VMT screening criteria and the changes, if a project does not meet those screening criteria, then it has to conduct a VMT analysis, and then we need to assess whether it exceeds the threshold to create a significant impact. So the thresholds of significance are shown here. For residential employment, it would be 15% below the regional average of VMT. For retail, it would be a net increase in regional VMT would be a significant impact. Mixed uses should be evaluated on their kind of own, own kind of land use, what, how the different types of land uses generate. Although, you know, I think it's important to note that the specific plan you're just looking at is a great example of where kind of a broader, you know, analyzing the whole surface population, which is what the general plan did, is an appropriate metric. And so the changes since the 2020 policy are shown here. Nine-county Bay Area regional average is being used instead of the San Mateo County average. That's based on recent guidance, more recent guidance from those agencies, acknowledging that you can't really compare particularly for employment against a county-wide average if you're drawing a lot of employees from outside the county, and that's, you know, certainly in the case in San Mateo County, that you need to look at the entire region. And then within the kind of mixed uses, specialized uses, there's just additional guidance of like private schools, specialized land uses, private schools, hotels, open space hospitals. If they are going to increase, you know, if they're going to draw people from around the region, you're increasing some of the amount of travel. That could have a potential significant impact. But if it's really locally serving, it falls under the kind of, it's not going to increase regional travel. And so finally, once we get to that final, we've done the, you do the VMT analysis, you assess whether there's a VMT impact or not, look for VMT, and then you'll have to do mitigation if there is any, if there is a VMT impact. And mitigation can include a wide range of, you know, TDM strategies to, you know, investing in transit, bike ped, that, those sorts of measures. So that's the extent of the guidelines. Just a couple of things to wrap up here. The public noticed, this was noticed in the Daily Journal two weeks ago, and no public's comments have been received. And just to kind of tie things together, just to reiterate some of the points that Hanya made. So the general plan amendments really, it's keeping the goal of maintaining acceptable level service and adding VMT as a second performance metric while moving the technical details into the guidelines. The technical, the transportation study guidelines are there to clarify and ensure consistency, fairness, to make sure that, you know, developers, applicants, the city all have a clear understanding of what the appropriate processes are and just reduce the ambiguity and back and forth that does happen when there's not clear guidelines, and that it's meant to follow the latest state guidance, some of this information that's come up in the last year or two since San Carlos adopted its own guidelines. And finally, this doesn't change the processes for what this commission, for example, would be reviewing, since it's really about just clarifying the approaches. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Hanya to wrap up.
So this is a preview of the motions that we will be coming to you after we do the comments and discussion period.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioners, clarifying questions. Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you, Chair.
And then we'll switch to Commissioner Roof.
Yes, there's a lot here to bite into. First, I think this is really a good document to lay out expectations for all applicants in one place, so it's clear. So I applaud you on your efforts to get it all, you know, very public-facing and very clear for everybody. Thanks for that work. I had a, I guess I had a question generally about what the city requires, what these guidelines say as to, I understand the VMT analysis for sequo, and I like the flow chart. But I don't understand how it interacts with the level of service analysis and how the products of both of these analyses together, you know, are they slightly different? Are they compatible? How do they relate to each other? So that's one question. The second question is for those uses that, Matt, right, noted that for purposes of state law, like most affordable housing, 100% affordable housing projects do streamlining, therefore don't have to do the sequo analysis. Are they still doing the level of service analysis? And so is the city, you know, how much of a burden is that to the developers? Because the whole point of the sequo exemption there was to streamline and speed up the development process. So if you could clarify the contents of the LOS versus the VMT, and then does LOS analysis have to get done for every deal? And if so, you know, can we streamline any of that?
Before SB 743, the sequo process was done through LOS. With SB 743, we're not allowed to do that anymore. However, level of service looks at a more local impact at the intersection level and completely removing it and moving to VMT for a lot of these projects, especially the ones that get screened out, they still have a very local, very tangible to our residents impact. So if we completely not even study it and we approve all these development projects, the congestion is going to get really bad. So we need to get the level of service analysis done to kind of get an idea how bad things are going to be and how we can plan around that. Do we need more, more efforts in travel demand management efforts? Do we need more bicycle facilities to kind of shift people from the vehicles to mitigate for that in a, in a non-sequo kind of way? So that's the reason we want to keep level of service, but with it being removed from sequo, we need a mechanism to be able to still require that analysis done for large projects. So with this process, we're defining so that not every single development has to go through the LOS process. It's defined, if you have more than 100 trips a day, you probably don't even need to look at any of the intersections. If you have between 100 and 1,000, you have to look at very few close to you. But if you, if you're huge and you have 1,000 vehicles a day, then you need to do a full-blown, like we did before, analysis. So this process in the general plan amendment allows us to keep level of service while the sequo proceeds with VMT.
Okay. And so are they looking at similar things? You know, is the LOS, I know LOS is looking at congestion. Are the conclusions and the offsets to that congestion production, for instance, is that similar to what the VMT analysis would tell you to do in terms of VMT mitigation?
Not necessarily. So the mitigations will certainly vary. The level of service analysis may look at you to adjust the signal timing, for example, or change the lane configuration in some way to improve the flow of traffic. The VMT is looking at kind of bigger picture, things that are not so localized.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Roof.
Thank you. Very good presentation. And revising the VMT criteria seems to me to make total sense. My first and specific question is, in the past year or two, we've approved some projects that had transportation demand plans where, where there was a requirement for review at intervals going forward, like two years, three years, four-year reviews. And would the new criteria be used for those reviews? Or do they use the old ones? I'm just wondering what the impact this could be on already-approved TDMs.
Probably new, but we are in the process of updating our TDM policy as well. So when all of that is concluded, we will have a clearer picture on what projects will be required to do in the future.
Just to check, though, you were asking if they would be applicable retroactive?
Yes.
I don't think so.
It's probably good. We don't want to make those, I think those reviews are important to see if what we, see if what was proposed actually works, but we don't want to make them too unwieldy. My second question, and this is kind of helping to understand how our transportation plan across the city comes together as a whole. My concern is with the combined impact of separate projects. And so an individual project may not exceed the threshold, but the one that's, comes up one month later may exceed, cause it to exceed the threshold. And so is the second project the one that's required? And so is the second project the one that's required to mitigate the problem? Or is there a more holistic way of dealing with multiple projects? And how, as a city, do we make sure it all comes out okay with multiple projects being built in the same timeframe?
Every project that's proposed has to look at all the other projects that are approved in the area. So if there is a study that is done that predicts how many VMT and how many trips and what kind of level of service is anticipated because of that project, they have to take that in and add it as, add it in as an existing condition. Then they build on top of that their own generated trips. So it's more of a cumulative impact, and everybody will have to essentially fix whatever they've contributed.
That last part seems important to me in that your place in the line in the same approximate timeframe shouldn't matter. It seems like a more holistic approach would be necessary. So everybody, so if we approve one big biotech building and we don't exceed any thresholds, but then the second big biotech building is pushing us over into gridlock, how do we manage that potential situation?
So for the tier-three projects, the largest projects, need to do a cumulative analysis. And so that's really looking at your general plan forecasts, right? So your general plan is not just, that doesn't just have the growth of like Project A and Project B, it's, it's your total employment growth that's anticipated based on economic studies. So, you know, from, that is ultimately the most holistic way to look at these projects is to look at it from a cumulative perspective. What's your 20-year build-out likely to be? And then identify the contribution of each individual project.
What was that?
It sounds like Last of Lines pages.
The last, last what?
The Last of Line.
Yeah, page. I mean, except for the general, except for if I understood the last comment, the general plan should account for the combined impact of multiple projects. And so I guess that's kind of the answer to the question.
And the general plan is going to be updated. And once that's updated and adopted, we will redo the TIF. So that will, that will capture all the new things that are going to be expected that weren't in the previous version.
Transportation Impact Fee Program.
Yes.
Good.
So it identifies, essentially, it's a big city, citywide traffic study that identifies all the deficiencies and then identifies fixes for those deficiencies at all these locations and assigns a dollar figure to the total fix for all. And then each development that comes, based on their impact, they get assigned a dollar figure to contribute to the TIF. The money gets pulled together, and the city does projects using the money as defined in, in, in the list of projects that need to be done.
Okay, that, that really helps. Thank you for getting that out on the table. Because I know myself and members of the community worry, seeing all these buildings going up, what's going to happen at 5:00 PM? Is it going to be gridlock?
The plan.
And it's good to hear that the, that there is a plan, even though it's not necessarily obvious when we're discussing an individual traffic management plan proposal, but the, in a different context, the, the big picture is being addressed. So thank you. That's reassuring to hear. Those are the only clarifying questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Roof. You guys went strategic. I'm going to go very tactical. Can you describe what causes a trip to be generated? Like, just what's the definition of trip generation? How does it show up? Why?
Yeah, why, why, why do people travel? Why do people do the things they need to do?
Yeah, but more specifically, you're talking about measuring trip generation. What generates a trip rather than, oh gee, I'm on the way to CVS, and I'm going to stop at someplace new? It's, it's in the loop I would have done anyway versus, oh, I'm going to go to someplace new, which is a trip, which is not a trip.
Yeah, it's, there's industry, industry standard, national industry standard. The Institute of Transportation Engineers has trip generation counts for every type of land use imaginable, probably too many, but you know, your typical office, residential, retail are very well-known. And the example that you were just mentioning of, of stopping by somewhere, you know, for example, retail, a lot of it's pass-by trips where you're going from one place to another, and you're just chaining your trips together. And so that, there's, there's factors to account for that. So.
Great, thank you. I have no clarifying questions. Commissioners, before we go to public comment, we're ready to go, or? One more? One more?
I have one more, just big picture. So these are new guidelines. And how well do they reflect the pattern of what staff has been practicing already? And just puts it in writing and clarifies it for the customer versus, are there new, new procedures or new pieces of analysis in here? It's hard to know as a person who's not doing any of this work directly. Is this all new? Is this just codifying kind of what practices are now, or is this a blend?
It's mostly codifying what we're doing now with some simplification and some clarification. For example, now a project, a development project comes in, planners, first-line planners see it, they kind of have to guesstimate, is it big enough to trigger anything? Should we involve the traffic division? And it's kind of a guessing game back and forth. If it's huge, it's obvious, but if it's kind of in the middle, then it's a little bit complicated. This clarifies everything. And upfront in a flow chart, it shows a developer on day one. If your project is this small, you don't have to worry about any of this. You just go step one, two, three, and you're done. So it makes it easy for staff to follow. It makes it pretty predictable for the developers, and it puts it all in one place. Most of it has already been happening. The only thing that we're moving is VMT level of service in SEQA and non-SEQA, but it's all been, been happening already.
Right, thank you. And one fun fact, what is affordable housing? Is it all at or below 80% of area median? Is it all low income? Or does it include moderate income also?
It's, so the specific research that goes on behind it, it does, is not specific to the income category.
Okay.
So there's obviously a lot of distinction between different categories, and the city could define, get in the weeds on that. I would, you know, most jurisdictions are saying 100% affordable housing that qualify, you know, for state law and all that kind of, like the state law definitions qualify for this.
So it's not really specific?
Yeah, it's not, it's not like, there's like a missing, you know, kind of middle-income housing too as well. That's not captured within this.
That's not captured, yes. That I knew of. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to public comment. For those of you following along remotely, now is the next, the time for over the next, say, 30, 45 seconds to raise your hand, and Lynette will log you as a commenter. I have no speaker slips here in the council chambers, so this is your opportunity, going once, going twice, you can fill out a slip and bring it up. Okay, Lynette, are there any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. We'll give everybody just another couple of seconds remotely. Very good. I would entertain a motion to close public comment on this topic.
Chair, I move that we close a public comment on Agenda Item 6B.
Thank you. I second that. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
Chair Yakupony?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey is excused, and Commissioner Castaneda is absent.
Thank you. So we have two resolutions. If you could bring the, bring them both back up. And, and if I could, I think with, with the document that you shared this evening here and online, this is pertaining to Resolution 1, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so we are voting as to whether the, the text changes on effectively Plan Page 99.
88 and 99.
88 and 99. I'm sorry, I missed that. And so with, with our approval, these would then go to the City Council for approval.
Correct.
And so therefore, having clarified that, comments on this first resolution?
My comment is that it is very straightforward, and I approve, I endorse the idea of getting more specifics out of the general plan into guidelines that are more easily amended and kept up with best practices in the industry. So I support this work to amend the general plan.
Very good, thank you. And Commissioner Roof?
I also totally support adding the revised VMT and keeping the LOS. That, that all makes sense, and, and the specific changes listed here are acceptable, in my opinion.
Great, thank you both. I'm supportive as well, so I'd just be efficient, I'd entertain someone leading with this motion.
I'll take a turn. I move that the Planning and Transportation Commission adopt the resolution recommending the City Council approve an amendment to the circulation and scenic highways element of the general plan.
Thank you, I'll second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
Chair Yakupony?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey is excused, and Commissioner Castaneda is absent.
Very good, thank you. So moved.
Great.
Voted. The second one, then. The, just to clarify, and I think, I'm pretty sure you did, but just for the record, the, the second item is the transportation study guidelines.
Correct.
And I think that has, clarify, if you, if you would please clarify, it has the report by the consultant plus a couple of other sections in addition, memorandum, maybe from 2020 or something. Can you just describe what are all of the things that are in it that we are now conveying to City Council for their approval?
So you're conveying to the City Council for their approval the process of what steps need to be followed in, in performing this study and the analysis, the methodology of the analysis, and in preparing the report? What needs to be included in that report? So they have to follow the steps, identify what size project it is, then they identified what type of analysis is required of them, that it specifically lists what items need to be included in, in each of those types of analysis, and what documents are required from them.
Okay. So, good, that was helpful. And the materials that will then be part of public code or city code or in, in the document comprised, are comprised of all of those packet pages?
Correct.
So that is the document?
That is the document.
Not just the first piece, the consultant's piece?
No, it's all the appendices and the memorandums and everything.
Right. Thank you. So I'm now clear on what we're being asked to support. So Commissioner, Vice Chair Clements, comment?
This is a lot to absorb.
Yes, it is.
And I think at this point, I need to, we need to trust our transportation experts and our staff, who is expert in this area, to, to say that the contents are sufficient, that they are clear, that it is, you know, in general, a better thing to have these all written out. And so it is hard to, as an outsider, comment really on the contents very much. I did appreciate the one edit that was noted to make it more understandable and user-friendly in the motion on page, packet page 112. So I'll be supporting that. And I guess I would just, yeah, urge the city to, if we want to reduce the cost of development here, we want to just make sure that our LOS analysis requirements are not overly detailed or overly onerous and can be done in fairly short order. And so maybe that's partly a question, then. How long does a typical LOS study take for those larger projects that do need them?
I wouldn't think it should take any more than two to three weeks. They would have to collect the data if it's a level two, tier two or three. They'd have to collect the data as the prescribed intersections, generate, use the formulas from the ITE book to generate their trips, assign them to those intersection and, you know, run a model. So it's not, it's not that complicated to perform. And a lot of those fixes or mitigations for LOS are simplified because of SB 743, because a lot of those things, like adding the lane, widening the roadway, are no longer allowed because they're VMT-inducing. So all of those tools are not even applicable anymore. So we have to get creative with other ways of reducing congestion.
Interesting. Okay, so those are my comments. I'm supportive of the detail level and trusting that all of this is, you know, up to the best practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Roof?
Yeah, I also was grappling with the, the scope of the, of the study guidelines. And it, but I think I'm comfortable letting, looking at that as sort of a, more of a procedural, procedural guidelines. And, and that as a, as a planning commissioner, I want to make sure that I understand and, believe in the strategic decisions here, which are adding the VMT, keeping the LOS. But the details of the, of the procedures of how projects are categorized and the like, I think that's, I'm comfortable with how that is laid out, even though I admit I'm not an expert at, at all the details of that document. So I would be supportive of that.
Great, thank you. Lisa?
Can we just clarify, I think your question is, what makes up the transportation study guidelines?
Yes, thank you.
And it's the guidelines plus the appendices, A through G. But I think our suggestion at this time is we could eliminate Appendix C, as it's really referencing a past action that's already publicly available. But all the other appendixes should be published with the final version.
Thank you for clarifying. I, I was trying to, I wasn't following clearly when I was going through it. It might have been late, but I get it. Thank you, Commissioner Roof. And I think one comment was, is that I appreciate that the state has gone to VMT for, you know, for pollutant, criteria pollutant and pollution reduction. I'm very mindful that here in San Carlos, what people care about is level of service because whether it's parking, whether it's, you know, rush hour, whether it's, you know, what are you going to do with these 5,000 homes that come into the city over the next 20 years? You know, what's my life going to be like? And level of service and mitigating, that feels to me to be what matters to my, my fellow residents. And so I'm glad that both are retained, and I think for developers, the rules are clarified in a way that, you know, hopefully it'll make their lives easier. I'm going to trust you on that because you're the experts, and I think, as both my colleagues have said, a lot of material, I, and therefore, thank you for having developed them. And I trust that if we find they need to be updated, you'll find the right time to get them updated because they don't fit any longer, so. And therefore, with that, I'm supportive of, of this resolution as well. And so I'll further move that the Planning and Transportation Commission adopt a resolution recommending the City Council adopt the transportation study guidelines, as clarified here in the, the meeting this evening, to eliminate Appendix C, including staff recommendation, staff's recommendation to change service population to employee or resident on the first line of packet page 112.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
Chair Yakupony?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey is excused, and Commissioner Castaneda is absent.
Very good. Thank you, Hanya and your support team for pulling all this together, and good luck with City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We're now on Agenda Item Number 7, 7A, Report on Recent City Council Actions. We're now on Agenda Item Number 7, 7A, Report on Recent City Council Actions.
I just have one update. It's for the Project 244 Club Drive Annexation Project. In the last meeting in June, the first reading of the ordinance was approved by the council. And the next reading is scheduled for the next City Council meeting, which is on August 12th. That will be the second reading, after which the annexation will be approved.
Very good, thank you. Item 7B, Planning and Transportation Commission Comments or Reports. Commissioner, Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say it's really nice to have Commissioner Roof, Chair Yakupony here with us, and I wanted to thank them for continued service past the end of their term so that we can maintain a full Planning Commission staff. And we look forward to the new appointees when it is appropriate and timely. But thank you for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure and happy to continue to support the city in the process, for my part.
And I'll say that I'm also happy to serve for a few additional meetings to smooth out the transition.
And I would have one, and just, this is Rucha's first time leading our Planning and Transportation Commission meeting, so thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 7C, Correspondents? Very good. And 7D, Planning Staff Comments, Reports, and Updates of Current Projects, and hopefully including an outlook for meetings over the next month.
I have two updates. So the next, we have a special Planning Commission meeting scheduled on Tuesday, August 13. That's when the Alexandria Project EIR will be, will be receiving public comments. And then the future regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting that is on August 19th, at this time, has no items scheduled, so probably could be canceled, but we're just awaiting any items to be scheduled at that meeting at this point. And that's it from staff and the reports.
Very good, thank you.
Chair, may I ask a clarifying question? Could we get an update on recruitments for the additional, the new commissioners and what that timing looks like?
I have no updates at this point, frankly, but we can look into it and get back to you.
Then I think with that, we're on to Agenda Item Number 8, Public Comment. So at this time, we welcome public comment, both here in council chambers and also remotely. Public comment is limited to items not on this evening's agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed, as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action report. I have no speaker slips for anyone here present this evening. And if you're following remotely, this is your opportunity, opportunity to raise your hand, at which point Lynette will record you and log you in as a commenter for this evening. So we'll give you a few seconds here. And Lynette, are there any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. If you're a remote caller, going once, going twice. And now, Lynette?
None.
Okay, thank you. I'd entertain a motion to then close public comment.
Chair, I move that we close public comment, the last item on the agenda tonight.
I second the motion.
Thank you both. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
Chair Yakupony?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey is excused, and Commissioner Castaneda is absent.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, for another good meeting, and we are adjourned.